All right, good evening, everyone. Today's Tuesday, September 26th. This is the Starboard meeting. They have a motion to accept the agenda. So, loop by Mrs. Connolly, second by Mr. Goodrich. All in favor, I think we made a roll call because you have one remote attendee. Mr. Harrison from Canfield is joining us remotely. Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Con? Yes. And before we go further, I'd like to read our statement that the Situate Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. And we ask that our committee members and all who participate to commit to be standards to support and respect our community. And with that, I will ask if there are any walk-ins here recently. I don't see any, so we will go through the report of Ms. Raygus.
Good evening. A bunch of new stuff tonight, so we'll go as quick as we can. Water update, reservoirs are plus three last week, plus 2.5. Rainfall was 1.50 measured at the plant last seven days. The band was 1.245 million gallons a day. Just down a little bit from the up, a little bit from the week before, 1.235. This is probably our last update, the water restriction to end on the 30th. So generally, once the water restriction grow, we're not doing more updates. So we'll just talk to the spring. We do have plenty of water. I know the water apartment is flushing. It's small, we'll announce that as we come up with it. Speaking of the water apartment, the water apartment office located at Rotary Avenue 3A is closed until further notice. Just over a week ago, we had a pickup truck go through the part of the building on Friday night. It did significant damage to the office space. Very fortunate, no one was working at the time. We do have a contractor, the Jones Company, on site now, working on that. If you have questions or issues with the water apartment, they are located here at Town Hall. And the apartments from down the hall, we routed the phone to their computers, so they're back up and working. But if you do have issues with the water apartment, you should come here to Town Hall and not to the water apartment office. We had a lighthouse reunion this morning. We've done the first pour, second pour for the dome portion of the concrete is scheduled today. Due to the weather yesterday and today, that pour did not take place, or almost likely to take place on Thursday. Did not push too much on our schedule. I did send fixtures to the board. We went up last week to the contractor's yard. Looked at the land, the land looks fantastic. He's done an amazing job. So they're putting that all together. What you saw will now be plaid waterproofing. Then they'll, unclear whether it's going to strip it down here together, or take a pot and ship it down here. But it will be shipped down here, then it'll be plaid in copper on site before we put back up on the land. We are still scheduled for the end of October. The only thing we're pushing the schedule on could be painting. Okay, we'll paint it before the winter, so we'll keep an eye on that. We're going to do our best to get it painted, but it may end up sitting until the spring here, the paint on. Citrus Library and the Citrus Library Foundation will be having an opening celebration for Throw's Way. The outdoor patio space built is a quiet place of reflection, recreation, and a celebration of the natural world. This Saturday, September 30th at 10:00 a.m. There'll be a children's storytime on Throw's Way and kids' crafts and refreshments in the community room. So please join the library staff, sell in the Library Foundation, celebrate the opening of Throw's Way that nice outdoor garden they have outside the library. The Howie Palmer is planning a resurfacing parcel front street starting next month. We have notified there's one restaurant that has material in the street that that has to come off this weekend. We'll move those barriers next week, and then as soon as possible, start running up paving front street. We will give notice hopefully a couple of days in advance to the businesses, just so they know. I talked to Brian Houlihan today. He'll be removing his stuff from the street. Said he's just fine if you want to put a patio in for him while we're there.
I'm sure.
Why wasn't happening, Brian? Thanks for letting us know. We have our surplus auctioners online now. There's a link on the town website. Interested parties can go and look at what's available. We have equipment and vehicles on there. You have to go register and you can bid and see what's available. Town's done pretty well on those, so we'll be forward to seeing what we get for that equipment. We've spoken to the social vote tech. The social vote tech has agreed to paint our two police Humvees. It's going to take a little bit of time until they'll take those up, they'll paint them, bring them back. So they did such a fantastic job on the fire apartment, antique fire engine. I just keep calling Tom every time I need a vehicle painted and say, hey, would you mind if I sent this up? We actually wanted to send the Buffalo, which is the giant high-water vehicle. It won't fit in their painting booth, so.
Are they going to be all black?
Yeah, they'll be black, and then they'll put the decals off and bring it back. So we'll take some good pictures before, good pictures afterwards, but we're excited to see what the kids do with those things. Citrus Police, along with the Kraft Family Blood Donor Center, Dana Farber Cancer Institute, the Brigham and Women's Hospital. We're hosting a blood drive to remember and honor all those fighting cancer. Sunday, October 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Public Safety Building, 800 Chief Justice Cushion Highway. Appointments are recommended, but walk-ins will be taken as time allows. As a special thank you, donors will receive their Kraft Family Blood Donors Center long sleeve Halloween t-shirt. Details on making appointment are posted on the town's website. We'll remind residents that the town has a link on the town website right at the top. For the proposed Cushion and Athlete MSBA School Building Project. Residents seeking information on the proposal for the new elementary school, go to situateMA.com, click on that link to get taken through all the information they need on that project. New update, I'm pleased to note that the legislature has passed and the governor has signed Senate Bill 2424. An act authorizing the town of Citrus to appoint retired police officers as special police officers. This was passed by town meeting last spring. Will allow us and the police department to utilize retired police officers to help with our band prop issues when we have particularly busy summer months. It is now chapter 41 of the Act of 2023. Thank you to Senator O'Connor and Representative Candy for steering that through the legislative process. Food pantry is still looking for donations. Thank you for your support, but they still have a high need in town. Clam chowder, all clam fish except tuna, canned ham, baked beans, mac and cheese, rice pilaf, sloppy joe, white beans, decaf coffee, the ground out instant, and cold healthy cereal. I think we dropped off the food pantry Tuesday mornings, 10:00 to 12:15. Thursdays, 3:00 to 5:15. Are there two white covered containers behind the cold case building where they believe it? Or at the library, the village market, and Shaw's. Spitting, the Chief Thompson is here. We want to congratulate Police Chief Mark Thompson, who graduated from the FBI National Academy in Port of Montego, Virginia, two weeks ago. Pleading a rigorous 10-week course along with 100 negate other law enforcement professionals from 46 states, the District of Columbia, 21 countries, or military organizations, three federal civilian agencies. Internationally known for its academic excellence, the National Academy offers 10 weeks of advanced communications, leadership, and fitness training. Students must have proven records as professionals within their agencies to attend FBI Academy instructors, special agents, and other staff with advanced degrees provide the training. National Academy students are also able to earn undergraduate graduate school credits from the University of Virginia, which credits all the National Academy courses. So congratulations to Mark on that. I thought of going until I saw the advanced fitness training part. So I think I'll start. But congratulations to Mark for that. And since Mark is here, the board generally does not recognize 20 years service awards, those just get mailed out. I would like to congratulate Mark on his 20 years of Citrus Police Department. I was going to say more. No, it's okay. It was nothing good.
Well, we all congratulate you and thank you for your leadership. We're so proud of you with the FBI Academy. We all feel that we're a safer man, so I think because of that, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Sorry, Jim. Oh, way better. Better than TV.
I just said he was appointed in 2023. Became deputy in 2016 and chief in 2020. That's what I have tonight.
Excellent. Well, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off in the middle.
Wasn't anything good.
Thank you, Mark. Congratulations, we appreciate it. So anybody have anything for Jim? No, just want to clarify, it sounds like the, the gas company is probably not doing any more work in Citrus.
Not at the stock, no.
Not at the stock. And if they don't do it soon, they won't be able to do it till the spring.
Correct, because they don't have any payment. So, we know Jared, Jared Bell, and vinyl is put off probably indefinitely. And they haven't got back to us, they haven't got back to us on 3A yet, have they?
They don't get back to us on 3A, but they are talking about doing replacing the line on Lantern Lane, which is a small street. Any more negotiations?
No, when you're saying 3A, are you meaning 1.3?
1.3, sorry.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
I'm taking out 3A for something else.
I was just going to say, yes. It's really awful now to travel that road. I don't know any more signs that we put up to say people go five miles an hour, but it's pretty dreadful.
We've already spoken contract about the conditions, we can talk about additional signs to.
I mean, it's, I can avoid it if I have to, but there are people who can't, so it's pretty awful.
On the schedule, he's going to stop putting in the laterals which go across the highway. Then when those are ready, he'll come back and.
And have him make it works right for a while.
Well, then he'll have to pave it all again to butt up for the time, right? Right now, it's just a temporary path.
It's all temporary paving if it's down.
On contractions.
Yes, we could have more light, but then he's going to be coming back to figure it out for the services. So we're discussing with him what we can do to try to do the best we can without wasting.
That's all.
Just a quick question. For my best answer to this, the CTC project, they're pushing for L. Just didn't know if you had any schedule on that or what we're thinking. This construction season's pretty. We actually, it was looked at by Mike, Mike Crane. I talked to Kevin Sathel, who was signing on, Jeff Chessy, our engineer. Just off for the next couple of days, getting married, but he's coming back and doing it a little later. So he'll be back on it on Tuesday. It's going to be his practice priority at that time.
The part next spring.
Depends on what needs to be done.
Okay.
You know, they're going to do a complete rebuild, it'll be the spring. Maybe they get a sidewalk machine in there and just pave it. Possibility. It's really a factor, yeah, for town.
Well, thank you. We did have a little internal discussion about it with the engineers. It is something that we may have an engineering department and look at it just to make sure it meets all the ADA requirements before we do it. That was one of the concerns at the plant where it comes down. It's not, it might be ADA compliant, so it's something that would need some research. So we may just put it up to an engineering department.
What did Morse do? They just surveyed it? They didn't do any engineering on it?
They did a base, a base survey of it. Distance possibly.
Susan? Mrs. Canfield, anything for Jim? No? I just have one quick question for Kevin. When the lime dogs are coming for all the paving that we did, will that be, you know, through the stop lines and the?
Did we? We're, we're working, we're having a problem with the NA PC contract who's not coming out. So we're, we're working with procurement on getting another contract of the commitment.
Gotcha, so the one that we just approved didn't, didn't we just approve? Along? Yes, okay. Okay, well, we'll look for that, I'll tell you. Okay.
It's, it's not on my list, but I just discussed it multiple times.
Go back and watch. Gotcha. Okay, well, thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to our first item, which is something that we all enjoy doing, which is recognizing our long-term employees. So I will first call up Chief Mark Donovan to come and recognize Lieutenant David Mortolato, who is celebrating 25 years of service to Citrus. So, Mark, did you want to say a few words? Well, go.
Okay. In Mortal, we joined the department in September of 1998. Pointed to Lieutenant, September of 2007. At the time, the, we appointed him in the department we were upgrading to paramedic level. We had just a handful of paramedics and we were, you know, that was becoming standard care. So we, what we did was we called our first paramedic list. We had to go outside the city to do that. Dave, Dave was on the list of candidates at the time we hired. Dave Don McGraw, Brian, Brian Petroni, which all three were experienced and it was able to help us get this paramedic program up and running. And we really wanted a first person, the social to do that, and Dave was a big part of that. Dave's been a CPR instructor for 20 years. He's been a knowledgeable resource to other town departments. He's involved in the public access, the AED rollout to all the town buildings. He continues to support maintenance and training for all the, you know, the departments that request his assistance. Lieutenant Mortolato was the department EMS coordinator for many years and a past board member of the state EMS region four, which is Metro Boston Board of Directors. Additionally, he's been the Fire Department EMS liaison on the Citrus Public Schools. Dave's a certified safe instructor. SAFE stands for Student Awareness of Fire Education, a state funded program which utilizes firefighters and instructors. Training to teach preschool to grade three students and fire safety. Each year in October, the team visits the elementary school and preschools in town, and they also oversee the department's annual, which is all in October. Ours is October 17. 17, yeah. 17?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we've got something going on in that this week. In 2014, SAFE expanded the program to include seniors. The Senior Safe Program helps keep seniors safe at home. Dave is responsible for installing new smoke alarms and batteries for seniors that are unable to do this for themselves and programs ongoing. This past year, Lieutenant Mortolato received our, revised our town SERC teams, citizens emergency response team. Teams already have been utilized a few times this year. We haven't seen Patrick Stady over here help and Harris Stady, we have seen them walk around the vest on here. Fantastic job. Dave's been a community outreach go-to guy and continues to be a valuable member of the department. And I'd like to congratulate you on your service.
Yeah, don't guess the week's end, but first I know the board members would really like to say some words of congratulations and gratitude to you.
Thank you very much.
Especially.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Extra perfect work you've done. You know, thank you for doing all that and for helping our community stay safe. And we, we see you out there and personally appreciate it.
Thank you.
Karen, you want to say anything?
Well, I just want to say, I don't think people realize how important the Fire Department is to the community. Aside from fires, there are so many other things that you do. And clearly, you spend a lot of time doing a lot of those things. And I, as a citizen, I certainly appreciate it. And I think I speak on behalf of the whole town in saying, thank you for all that hard work. Don't go anywhere.
I won't, thank you very much. Did you get the picture up on the screen?
Is Seth up there?
Oh, no. I wanted to show you something. This guy, 25 years. Look at that. He hasn't changed in his 25 years. Yeah. So, yeah, the guy is not age. Well, he'll look like this in 25, when we do his 50-year.
I might not be here, but. He'll look great.
Just thank you to be so, anyone who's had to have all EMS to come and folks to be calm when the rest of us are acting absolutely crazy. Because we're so nervous and scared. So just thank you for the countless folks and communities. I don't want to tell you, but I'm that uniformed and it just helped our community countless times.
Thank you. I was, I want to say thank you for the education in the schools, because I realize that my kids came home and taught me all these things.
That's the best.
It's fun to watch them learn, as well as school me and tell me how I need to change values and stuff. So thank you. Without using a bat.
Without them going off in the middle of the night.
Karen, Canfield, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm so sorry, I'm not there to shake your hand and thank you for your long and dedicated service to the town.
Great, thank you. So in addition to the gift, you will have your name permanently engraved at the back of the room in more selectment. There's a plaque back there, so your name will be added for our 25.
Good thing you did it quick yesterday.
Okay.
Or nothing's going to.
So thank you so much.
Okay, good. All right.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. And welcome back up, Chief Thompson. We also have a 25-year of service celebration in our police department. We have Officer Fred Malouf. Congratulations, Fred.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So Officer Malouf has been a valued member of the Citrus Department since 1998. He received preliminary certification from the Northeast Regional Police Institute as a reserve intermittent officer in December of 1994. And completed further training as a member of the Police Academy 30th recruit, option training for graduating in March 1999. While with the department, Officer Malouf has been assigned the midnight, the day, and the evening shifts. Works split shift between day and evening. And throughout his career, he's received advanced training in mental health for his day, response to terrorist incidents, and tactical communications. Officer Malouf has enhanced our summer, was a part of the Marine unit, bicycle in E D. Prior to joining the department. Prior to joining the department, Officer Malouf was employed with the Massachusetts General Hospital Police Department and served for 11 years with the Marine Corps, which included deployment to Iraq, Iraq in the first Gulf War. Officer Malouf earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Curry College. So I was driving up there and I was thinking of that, and I think Fred kind of epitomizes a lifetime of service. I mean, if you look at 25 years, but Marine Corps and service to the country, the community, through his department here, and the sacrifices personally, but also his family who's here tonight. That's really a lot of dedication and service that we really applaud and appreciate.
So, well, we do have something for you.
Thank you.
Greatness.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Be a little bit better organized and thank you, Officer Malouf, for all your dedication. I think Chief said it really well, your public service from the beginning, joining the Marines and serving the country, and coming back here and continuing to serve the community. And taking on mental illness and health is a big issue in our community as well, all communities. So I want to thank you for stepping up to continue to address that as well and thank you for your service. We, we have great police force and a great fire department, and it's because of them, like you and Lieutenant Mortolato, that maybe that breaks, so thank you.
And we have to, we can't let Fred Malouf escape without a nice photo of him. Seth, if you can hear me.
Go bring that up.
Yeah, do it.
Also, yeah.
Blasphemy.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. How do they get you work split shifts? I want to know.
Oh, no, I agree with it, I'll rock.
Oh, good, good to see you. Great, thank you.
The, it's the economy. It's so difficult, the work they have to do. And dealing with both a difficult situation and then having to be thoughtful and tender and care in a difficult situation. As a volunteer, I don't know how you better. I don't have 25 years. I don't know how you were able to do it all the time. It's a miracle to me, my ear, you have to kind of hear those two different roles. And it's absolutely, thank you, you've earned this career.
Yes, thank you again. I appreciate your service.
Mrs. Canfield? You're up.
Again, I apologize, I'm not in the room to shake. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
It is such an, it's such an honor for this board to have these recognitions, to be able to highlight for the whole community. The extraordinary people that we have that help our community day after day. So this is a great opportunity to say thank you to the, to the, to the real faces of the heroes out in our, our public. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to your family for, for sharing you for so many years, your talents. And, and your name's back up on the black proof. Permanently for 35 years of service, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you see your pictures? Did you see your pictures?
We have to show Mark. Thompson, his lovely photos as well. Oh, lovely.
You have an age.
I want to know.
Thank you, Seth.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Canfield.
Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Exactly, that's the good stuff that we get to do. And another great change in the next, yeah, one of our next three agendas is to interview Nick Demasias.
Demasia.
Demasia. Nick, I'm sorry, I knew I was going to just do that, I apologize. Come on forward, I thank you for coming forward. You are submitting your application for the Bylaw Review Committee, correct? So, Mark, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are signing yourself up for this very important but tedious work that Mrs. Canfield has been experimenting on.
How do I say it? Yeah. Camera there? There.
She can see you.
I've lived in Citrus now just a little over 10 years, 11 years or so. I've always wanted to get involved with the town. My job was very demanding, took a lot of hours and a lot of travel, so it included me from doing that. I recently retired. Now I have the time, and I have a lot of time. So I thought this would be a good way to get involved and help the town. Can learn a lot about the town. That's why I wanted to.
Thank you, especially doing bylaws. Were you recruited or did you see that there was an opening and step forward on?
A little of both. I had my application in, I think earlier, maybe not for the bylaws and the committees that I wanted and the openings. So this was just a good one.
Well, we need people that have great attention to detail. I really like to look through and, and help us streamline and refer some of the one better places. I thank you for that. Any questions for this?
Maybe you could just tell us a little bit about your professional background?
Okay. It's very unique. My professional background is, was, 40-plus years in the nuclear industry. I used to work at building nuclear power plants, half-nuclear power plants. And then I ended up working for a company that provided services to the nuclear industry. My position was that as president of an energy company that provided those services. I did that for many years. So I traveled throughout the country to all the different parts of the nation. It's a very disciplined background. I got involved with a contract type information, bidding on the contracts, bidding on proposals. So contract language, I'm very familiar with, working with people. I'm also very familiar with, so that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you.
That was my question, and then I'm sad just to me, talking about a precise.
Yes.
Industry and attention to detail and the necessity.
Yeah.
Yes, which I think aligns perfectly for attention to detail by law, so that. Is that, I have another question. Get over there.
Are they meet, is this a meeting? Have you attended the meeting?
No.
It's just starting.
I think it's starting again, right? Okay. Yeah, so I don't know.
Mrs. Canfield?
Yes, I'm, I'm deeply sorry I'm not in the room to talk with you because we've just come on, as you may not know, we just came off of a charter review. And have been, you know, and flagged a lot of things that needed to be addressed in the bylaw. And the Bylaw Review Committee has been dormant, I'm sure Lorraine told you, dormant for a while. And we have an unusual situation where I think the first order of business is to recruit a quorum. Because folks aren't flocking to this. So I really appreciate coming forward, your background and attention to detail is exactly what we need. So I'm not sure procedurally, what, you know, this appointment, we, right now, it's a committee of one. And so I think we need to talk to Lorraine and, and figure out how we're going to get some more folks to join us in this work because it's super important. So I don't know if you got all that background for Lorraine, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware that this is a, it's a startup venture at this point.
And I think Karen, Lorraine indicated that we have two right now, I believe. So you said?
Mrs. Demasia would be the second.
Okay, great. Okay. Do we need to wait until we have three or four, or what is the?
We can talk to Karen about it. I, I think we need at least three. Yeah, it's up to five members, is what.
Yeah, at least three. Okay, sorry. Well, thank you for coming forward because obviously your talent is needed. And I would imagine, like everyone mentioned, you know, your work with regulations and contracts would be really helpful. And we appreciate you stepping forward. How this usually works is, we'll wait till the end of the meeting to vote all the committee appointments. I don't really think you have any issues, but we'll vote at the end. You're welcome to stay and listen to the meeting, but you don't have to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and we appreciate you stepping forward.
Karen, looking forward to working with you. Karen, looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a great day. All right. We are just going to take, I checked a little bit out of order, just to accommodate some schedules. So we thought we would go to Bob Far, our, our agenda item at eight thirty-five for the waiting means like a bargaining memorandum of agreement. Bring him up and then we'll get to the N E T A in five. How about?
How are you?
Great. How are you?
Good. So we have been negotiating for successive collective bargaining agreement, where just, I can't even read it. And that's basically the bargain unit that pretty much represents the D P W. So we have entered into an M O A, which they ratified, or one we have heard, so that's good news. So presenting that for the board's approval and signature. So we've negotiated wage increases for this year. So to create a contract at Y twenty-four to that Y twenty-six. Two and a half percent increase this year, three percent the second year, three percent third year. We've added a step. There's only six steps in the, in the common contract. So we've, we added a provisional step to reward C D R, if people have been here for a while. We've, we've graded a, a former class, a former position to a new classification. And another change we've made is we, we added a health insurance opt-out. In which employees who they, they opt out of their health insurance would get a, basically a stipend, which totals for a family plan, six thousand dollars a year, but individual, three thousand dollars a year. Kind of win-win because it would probably, would ultimately be less money for us. We'd have savings to trump our expenses. And the employee would have a additional income. So a lot of, the, a lot of the payments that we make to members of the laborers union is through stipends. And so we, we, we really had to, to look at how we've been doing that. One of the things that we, we were really interested in doing is increasing the incentive for people to go and get higher licenses. This is particularly in the wastewater treatment and the water treatment plan. There's the, the economy right now is such that we, we see that people who get the higher licenses are often jumping ship and moving to other towns. So we wanted to avoid that, but we also wanted to, to provide incentive for people who are currently working in need of these plans to get the advanced stipends. I mean, advanced certificates. So you've increased stipends subsequent years from three thousand to four thousand to five thousand dollars for people for having the top licenses in those categories. You also increased stipends for things like pesticides, C D L instructors. And so all, a lot of this is, is trying to encourage people to, to move forward and get those, those licenses that we think are critical for buying the, the operations. We're looking at giving stipends for people who may call a, the snow emergency events, sanding events. You know, when we have a huge storm, we just want to make sure we do everything we can to try to get that more in. So that was, that was important to us as well. So there, there was a few things that management really wanted to, to change to this contract. And a lot of it had to do with, with the sick lead policies. We really wanted to have a sick lead review procedure that was much more sort of, sort of management friendly and structured in a way that we, that, that had some, we had some ability to hold employees accountable if there might have been some sick leave reviews. We're not feeling there was a significant issue with this unit, but we just really want to have a language that worked better for us. So we, we made a lot of changes to the sick lead policies that kind of reflect that desire. And just one or two other changes we made, the, the, the members of the laborers union were required by the international union to actually contribute to that pension thing. And they were required to contribute seventy-five dollars a week. So it was a hundred fifty dollars every day. And that wasn't optional. It was the laborers who were requiring that and it was problematic. Honestly, even with the proof because it's a, it's a significant amount of money. So ultimately, one of the changes we made was the union went back to the international and we had a meeting that affected January. They're going to stop requiring employees to make that contribution. The town will still contribute to the labor's pension. But employees will no longer be required to contribute. And, and I, yeah, it's not even optional. It's like they, it's not an option that are offered. We're just not that contribution. And so ultimately, I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's a significant amount of money for them, thousands of dollars every year. So I, I think that that went along with towards, you know, kind of satisfying, I think, that members of the, of getting a contract. And then the last two things that we added is we, we added some language which, which kind of, you know, strengthened the, the obligation of members to show up during storm emergencies, weather emergencies. We also put some language in there that gave us a little bit more latitude with restyling that if, if we had a weather emergency or even the, the, you know, we were running emergency shelter, whether it was small, we'd be able to take people out of certain positions and put it into other ones. We've had similar language in other contracts we've added, and it's all designed to just give management more flexibility with how we utilize resources. So. But ultimately, I think, you know, it was a good contract for the, for the laborers. And I think management got a few things out of that that, that really helped us to manage fast. So. It was a good group to work with. I mean, the, the, the D P W department general, I mean, I think you have really good group and they work hard. And so I think we felt good to be able to get this contract.
Well, thank you for that, Bob. And I want to thank you for all the, the care that you and your team put to, put towards especially the stipends and, and to bring in the best talent and also to keep our talent and allow them to grow here, right? Leave elsewhere once they get those licenses. So we know how hard it is to hire for these departments. So I appreciate all the attention that you put forth to, to work this, this agreement through. Did you have a cross-section of folks from water transfer and ground or anything? What was the negotiating committee? Not for people, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we, we have. We had one person from grounds, one from the water division. And one, one from water treatment and one from water distribution. So, yeah. And, and the, the former from grounds, he's a sharp steward. He's, he's very involved and he's very communicative with, with the rest of the members. So, you know, they, they have good representation, which is good. I, I, I always feel really comfortable, but you know that, that well represented, which is, you know, it, it's helpful to have like a solid sharp steward in place. It makes our job a lot easier, to be honest with you.
Good. Thank you. Questions? Yeah, I guess a question about the pension contribution that the workers were required to make.
Right.
Where is that money going?
So it goes to, really to Washington D.C. to the, the, right, international. There were, you know, it was problematic in that the, the employee would have to invest it five years to get vested in order for them to be able to draw down any of that money. If they didn't reach the five years, that money was basically lost.
It was forfeited?
It was forfeited and it was literally, could easily be over twelve thousand dollars. So, you know, it was, you know, in, in, in a lot of members, you know, I kind of, you know, again, it's, it's a union benefit, but a lot of members will be really concerned about that. So I felt it was a huge sort of step for us to kind of, to, one thing is just to make out these positions more attractive because it was a, it was a reservation sometime for we, we'll be to the proof. So we always put it out there. Every time we do the proof, I didn't want someone to, you know, learn that upon high that all of a sudden, you know, we were responsible for seventy-five dollars a week. Paid that number.
Well, the, the only hesitation I have about that is that sometimes people care more about what's in their pocket today.
Right, right.
And they don't think about what happens, you know, when it's time to retire. Now, the fact that they have to, if they don't make five years, they have to forfeit that money, that's a disadvantage, frankly, to the international. I don't know why they would do that. But so, at any rate, that was my concern is that, you know, easy to say, yeah, I'll take that because I have my five dollars now. And not worry about when I'm sixty-five. So, thank you, thank you. Did you?
I, just going through all this and, and I guess speaking for some of the taxpayers. Talking about money well spent on things like the C D L, we've been talking about making sure that there's compensation for the licenses, but I cannot believe how expensive some of those are to get and maintain. So that the goal is for folks at home, just for them to realize that, to, to maintain labor chores that's coming. But this is money well spent to make, to make sure that we have all of our, but to make sure that folks are happy. Well, this is, this is, you know, it's out thoroughly in the one way.
The number of positions require C D L, we prefer C D L, C D L drivers. The status has changed about two years ago. They require that someone takes, take a class to get a C D L license. And, and the class typically costs between five and seven thousand dollars. And so they're responsible for that before they ever get a foot. So we're looking, we've, we've been looking into actually, we've talked to the state about whether or not we can actually become certified trainers. And so we would actually train in-house C D L drivers. And so that they, they wouldn't be on the hook for four or five thousand dollars. We can train it here. It's another way we can kind of improve people because it's a, you know, incentive to come in and work with time and see what's instead of being, you know, on the hook for four or five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's great. I'm reading through this. You can really tell that you, there were real thoughtful changes and focusing on retention. And I like that you're even thinking about the next step of retention because, because it's a constant, constant battle. I, I, I'm curious about the water distribution. So those rates weren't changed. Is that the, the different grades with water treatment? Waste water treatment, water treatment and water distribution. Is the just, are the licenses not as expensive or?
It's, it's, um, well, we weren't seeing that, that we were losing people as a result. You know, and so really it was when we talked about retention, we, so the, the, the water distribution license. I think it's a little easier to get. You don't have to work as long in the, in the, in the field to get to that next level. But we also weren't seeing, you know, that, that, that the movement. And I talked to other human resources directors from other, from other towns and, and, and they're saying the same thing. They're like just losing people. They, they were jumping and, and it's usually, but it's in treatment. It's usually a wastewater or water treatment. And particularly with the water treatment plan coming out here. So we wanted to make sure we were on solid footing. We had as many trained people. You, you're required by D P to have a certain level of certificate level in order to run a plant. So we want as many people to be trained in that place.
Thank you. Karen Gankel, do you have anything for Bob?
No, my questions were answered and I just wanted to echo the incredible work that was done on this contract. Good job, Bob.
There being any else, I'm drawing a motion. On page fifty-one. Yeah, sorry.
Move to approve the collective bargaining memorandum of agreement, Laborers Union Local one-one-six-two, bargaining.
Motion moved by Mr. Bredrich, second, second by Mrs. Harrison. All in favor? We have to do a roll call.
Miss Campio.
Yes.
Miss Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Bredrich.
Yes.
Miss Harrison.
Yes.
Miss Connolly.
Yes. All right. We're all set, Bob. Thanks so much. All right. So we'll go back up to our seven oh five, the M P T A compliance presentation by Karen Joseph, our town planner and Patricia Lambert, the chair of planning board.
So Patty Lambert, Shaw Young, planning board assistant, and I, Karen, date you on session three A compliance and E T A communities. We were here last in March and since then, we've had a working group consisting of the three of us, Karen, Connolly, and Viv. As well as a consultant, provided by a grant for Mass Housing Partnership for helping us to come to a recommendation to present to, to the town at the annual town meeting in April twenty twenty-four. Three A compliance is a shell. We have worked to incorporate the concerns we heard during the zoning changes from two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-one in Village Center Neighborhood District. No new land area, no increase in height, having open space requirements. We feel the best option for Sichet is to increase the density by right in several of the V C N districts to the minimum mandated by the state, along with having our two mixed-use districts. So if, um, we have a PowerPoint. So when the state put this into effect, multifamily has to be permitted as a right, at least one district of reasonable size, minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, maximum of ten percent affordability by right, cap on income not less than eighty percent A M I. Economic feasibility analysis may be prepared for communities requiring more than ten percent of this to be affordable. To receive credit for a mixed-use development, zoning must be, you have to get it approved by E O H L C, that's the former two H C D, at least nine days prior to town meeting. Mixed use on the ground floor only, no minimum parking for commercial. And there's an offset about twenty-five percent of unit capacity for a mixed-use zoning district. So we've been looking at, at this. And so right now, what this table shows is that we have, the black is what the, what, what is currently in the zoning bylaw right now. In our mixed-use buildings, we have twelve units per acre by right, twenty-four by special permit throughout most of the districts in Green Bush, except for the N D T V district. The N D T V district is the district that directly includes the train station. So that's the, um, the commuter rail parking lot, the Drew company, the Tedeschi property, a couple of properties across the street. That is sixteen units per acre by right, thirty-six by special permit. We had been presuming that we were not going to be able to count mixed-use districts. But the legislation changed in August, so now we can. But if we were not able to count our mixed-use districts, we were going to have to go up to seventeen units or sixteen units or eighteen units per acre in order to have the zoning capacity of twelve hundred and thirty-nine. Now that we think we can count our mixed-use districts, and we have mixed-use in Green Bush and we have mixed-use in North Sichet, we think we can go to fifteen units per acre in the G D, the, the, the rest of the places in Green Bush, except for the N D T V and in the Village Center and our village in North Sichet. So I think trying to stay closer to what we originally zoned is going to be best for the town.
Do we want to pause for a minute and see if, because it's a lot of information?
It's a lot of information. Here's the zoning map that might help you kind of identify what areas are what areas. This is Green Bush.
Yeah, I'll ask, I guess. Maybe it's a dumb question.
No question.
No question. It's a dumb question.
The million dollar question. Twenty years from now, where do you see any changes? Is this, right, this is, is this, what is this exercise going to actually produce?
We have to zone for the units. But Sichet is seeing the units being, we're seeing a lot of units being built. We have, the planning board has a lot of projects before us. We don't think that, first of all, we don't see that the Drew company is going to tear down their project and rebuild. We have a project in for sixty-one new driftway. We don't see that that's going to change. We've just permitted a project for thirty-three new driftway. We don't see that that's going to change. We've permitted a project for seven new driftway. We don't see that that's going to change. The gas station at forty-eight, fifty-two new driftway, we don't see that that's going to change. So we don't see that there is much vacant land in this district that would be impacted by going to, to, including our mixed-use district. Does that answer your question?
Hey, that's why I assume coming in, that partly this is a bureaucratic exercise by the state. Giving you folks a lot of work, giving us a lot of news to look at, that may not actually impact people's lives. Yeah, I'll say, I'll be, put it like I want to say that. To make sure that we're actually making sure that we're getting more affordable housing. We have to do it.
It's not about affordable housing.
Or sorry, but for. Or sorry, but for, um,
It, it's about housing. The state, the state is mandated that there's a housing shortage. We need more housing. So it's about housing. They did add some affordable requirements in last October. And so that, that the town of Situate is going to have to address too, because we're going to have to change some of the zoning. Right now, we're at fifteen percent by right, twenty percent by special permit. But there's not too many consultants who do the affordability analysis. We don't want it to delay things. So we're saying, why don't we go down to ten percent by right as, as they want us to do?
Yeah, I said, I didn't want folks to know, just what we did is all these different units are going to be gone. That's not at all going to be happening. That it just allow something that I just.
Yeah, so I think the way I dumped it down, because it's confusing to me as well, is that the planning board is attempting to reduce the density, which is in our, our favor for our residents. So we don't have to comply with the eighteen.
Right.
Term, whatever it is. And we're looking to reduce that to the fifteen. And the only way to do this is to submit an application including the mixed-use districts within that calculation. So in my opinion, they're working favorably on behalf of our town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't want that.
Yeah, no, 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 that's very confusing. So.
It's, it is. It's very, it's very confusing. So we think that, you know, there's a lot of excluded land in the whole area in Green Bush too, because the unit calculations, it's based on unit capacity, not, and that's what you could put there. But we take out salt marsh, we take out flood plain, we take out, um, zone A, which is within four hundred feet of your, of a water supply. We have to wetlands, we have to subtract a lot of land. So this is what the Green Bush area looks like. And then we have a map for North Situate. We have an inner village and the outer village. The inner village is the light gray and, or purple, and the outer village is the purple. So again, we will have to, we want, we want mixed use in the village center so that it can be vibrant. But we, so we want to be able to go to E B A or H L C and get that district approved, um, as well.
Susan, did you have any questions at this point? Karen Canfield, did you have any questions at this juncture?
No, this is great work.
Do you, I know you've been on the committee.
Yeah, and I want to thank, uh, this committee, they've worked very hard with the consultant to get us to this place. And I think the most important thing that I'd like to make everyone aware, we have to get this to town meeting in April. And so the schedule is, you know, it's going to be somewhat aggressive, but, um, I, I don't think that people really look at this and think about it. They're always concerned about it. I will say that I, at the very beginning of the story, we're going to have all on the, you know, important grid with towers. And that's not going to happen. Uh, we still have technical requirements or restrictions. So, um, I think that some of the things people are probably worried about, they don't need to. And most important thing that, that we pointed out in the stratorian process, that they changed the legislation for the mixed use, because I think a lot of us were thinking, you don't want to build simply, I'm sorry, I come from an era where they built projects in the city of Boston and they were a disaster. So we're not, that's not going to happen here, which is great. So I'm just encouraging everyone, all the boards that might need to be involved in this and the, and the town meeting to pay attention and to, uh, to get this done, so that we're not going to be worried. And the state is not saying, maybe you should comply. They're saying, you shall comply. And they've been adding sticks.
Right, they've been adding lots of, um, they've been adding lots of sticks, um, that failure to comply. Um, you, there's at least thirteen grants that you cannot get if you don't comply. They've taken, been taking money away from housing authorities, which, that's not good for anybody. Um, so we really need to comply. Um, our consultant is, her scope was expanded a little bit because the legislation's changed. So we should, we should be starting to run some hard numbers again next week, so we can be pretty certain it's fifteen, it's going to be fifteen units per acre in the two mixed-use districts. We see it as a basic summary, we'll have to change section four twenty, the table of use regulations, because we have to allow multifamily as right in, uh, our G W B district. We have to clarify some, um, multifamily dwelling problem. So we have to change densities. We have to change a little bit in affordable housing. So the, that section. We have to, um, we have to update some of our development standards. And we have to change some of the, we have to change some of the parking, so that it will say no commercials, just for the, um, for the by right development. You still have to provide the residential part. So I think it's, I think that, you know, we talked to our congressional reps, the, but they changed the laws. And I think it will benefit Situate in the end. And so we're hoping that everybody sees it, that, you know, we're trying not to increase the density too much. But we have to be, we have to meet the statement of our best.
Well, and I have one last thing to say, and that is, who knows to the planning board and especially the planning department? Because when the consultant first came in, she said, wow, you're really a long way, a lot further along than a lot of communities are, than this person does a lot of consulting, uh, on, on this issue as well. So, uh, a lot of the work is already done, but, you know.
Right. Then when we did, we did the zoning, when the town re-zoned in two thousand and nineteen and twenty-one, we set ourselves up to be in really good shape. He didn't know he was coming down the pipe. So.
We're down the train. Thank you. Um, so what, um, it's my, this is informative. There's nothing that you need from us at this time other than to help this move along, that we get to town meeting planning there and your town meeting.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, what we may, what we really would like the board to consider is we're supposed to have final wording by January tenth. We would ideally like to be having our public hearings in January versus December. Um, you know, back when I was a consultant in the development world, if you did anything between Thanksgiving and Christmas, it was conceived you're trying to sneak something. And this isn't trying to sneak something. This is just trying to comply with the law. So ideally, we would like to be able to have our public hearings in January to give us just a little bit more time to get the, get the bylaws all done and get all the, um, the compliance model all set and to find out the steps of actually how we, we apply to E O H L C.
Okay. Then you, okay, so we'll take a look at that and we'll probably set a note on moving that.
Karen and I already spoke, uh, if this is the one thing that comes a little later, as long as everyone's aware, it's just going to be later in Y.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Karen, Canfield, any questions?
No, no, thank you for the presentation.
Um, anybody else? Any other questions from the audience? Did you, um, thank you.
If you want us to come back, you know, when we have, when we have the zoning all figured out, what we need to do, just let us know. And we will be happy to come back and give you an update of exactly what needs to change.
Okay, that sounds good. It sounds like you have a lot of, a lot of reading.
So, thank you.
We'll take it a while. All right, and thank you for accommodating the movement of the agenda, the chair. We will move to, um, discuss for, uh, vote for a board one forty-three, um, outdoor entertainment and wine and ball license. Um, is Mark Carrery here?
Yes, hello.
Hi, Mark, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Great, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are your renovations going?
Hello.
Okay. People want to have their topics.
Yeah. Well, I'm studying.
Good.
That's more optimistic than having lost any, uh, enthusiasm.
Great. So tell us what you're, uh, hoping to achieve for the, uh,
Sure.
It's like a beer garden and it's for the Fall for Situate event.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we are looking to piggyback the Fall for Situate event as we did last year, uh, with a beer garden and some live entertainment upfront. Um, I think we'll have maybe fifty, a hundred people max. I think this is our, is it our fourth time?
Yes.
This will be our fourth time, so various to monthly previous, um, events.
And I don't know of any complaints that you've ever gotten through advice to it, so it's been a very down, well managed. Do you use bracelets or anything to enter the beer garden? How do you keep track of?
No, I mean, it's a small space. Um, the majority of the people are people we're familiar with, our customer base.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not like an entry to get in. We check out a T's.
And you're just certified.
Yeah.
Uh, everyone who works at it is certified.
Um, and it's mostly families with kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had one complaint last year, of course, I forgot about, missed this.
Oh.
The rain or the sun.
Rain or shine.
Rain.
It's rain or shine.
It's rain or shine.
They canceled Fall for Situate last year.
We still have them.
Oh, okay, that's great.
Well, that's all pretty right enough here, right?
Yeah, I mean.
How much longer can they wait? Seriously. Susan? Karen Canfield?
Nope, they've done very responsible pro, um, programs in the past, so, and, and yeah, we're the only intrepid ones last year, so. But we'll hope for good weather this year.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. And I know you're looking for a one-man, uh, acoustic guitar using amplification.
Yes.
Um, from twelve to four, so that should not be an issue. Uh, and then just the wine involves, because you'll be serving outside, so maybe within the wine. Right, you're.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, do I have a motion?
Move to approve a one-day wine and malt beverages license for board one four-three, seven-seven-six country way for the beer garden on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from twelve P M until four P M. And move to approve an outdoor entertainment license for board one four-three, seven-seven-six country way for the beer garden on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from twelve P M until four P M.
By Mrs. Connelly, second by Ms. Harrison. Uh, all those in favor, we have to take a roll call because we have a group of attendee.
All right.
Um, Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Good luck and thanks again for hosting that and making it a great, rounding up events.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is the North Situate Vision Improvement Association block party. That sounds like fun. Is Christian Bunnaman?
Yeah.
How are you?
Evening, well, yeah.
Great.
Right.
So I think this all seems to be an annual event as well, is it not?
It has been an annual event. It was canceled during COVID.
Back strong.
Yes, absolutely. And it's a pretty simple event. It's at the corner of, uh, Grasshopper and Ocean. We block the street off using the D, D P W's, uh, sawhorses, which we'll get, we understand. Uh, and, uh, don't put anything in the road. We use the neighbors' yards to put a bouncy house up and, uh, small grill for rocks and that kind of stuff. It's not Oktoberfest theme.
Really?
Similar to one, one-four-three. And we asked for two, two to seven, I believe, or two, or probably seven here now.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, two, two to seven. It'll be less than that. The sun goes down before that, so it will be cleaned up and out of there. That just gives us a little bit of extra time for cleanup. Rain could be the next day. Think there is rain.
Okay, rain date. Okay, perfect. And I know the police didn't have any issues, the D P W didn't have any issues. You addressed keeping the road clear, which that was the only thing that I read.
Yeah.
Uh, do you think there'll be more than seventy-five people?
Do not anticipate that.
Okay.
It's not the best weather to be hanging outside. And we don't have, sometimes you've had a branch open or something like that.
Well, hopefully you'll have a nice, uh, evening.
I hope so.
Any questions?
Well, we'll make your bra. Yeah, I just want to, you cook the grass in the beer and then put them on the grill, and put them on the grill, and then put them in the beer.
I'm not on the food committee, Jim.
We're back, we're on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you know.
Let me, I may have to.
Why not to come down? Is it the same day as Fall for Situate?
It is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good. You agree. Be festive in North Situate.
Make a loop.
Yeah, exactly.
It's actually the, the day before.
Oh, it's the day before. Oh, okay. Well, it'll be a festive weekend for sure. Um, Ms. Canfield, do you have anything for Mr. Bunnaman?
Uh, no, thanks, Chris. I've been going to this event for as long as I can remember, and it really is not a street event. It's a, it's a neighbor's yard event. It's great.
Great. All right, so do I have a motion?
Move to grant a block party permit to be put in line on October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from two P M to seven P M at the intersection of Grasshopper Lane and Portion Avenue.
By Mrs. Connelly, second by, sir, Mr. Goodrich, all those in favor?
Oh, yeah, too, well.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Love the event.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thanks for coming in.
We'll see you in a while. Yes.
Sounds good. Tim will be the first one to line.
I'm the fourth one here.
So next on our agenda, agenda, sorry. Welcome. So I know, Bill, you're here, um, with your clients to talk about approving an underground electrical service easement of one eighty-four Edward Foster Road.
Sure, thorough introduction, Bill Warren, Bernard, Joe Howell, test with the, he's in house with their building. And I also have with me, uh, Kevin Boye of Vanna Construction, who's the project manager out there in, in Hackville. Uh, this is the ability to bring power through the Howard's house across the street. So instead of putting one on the telephone pole, that just allows them to put the conduit and, uh, associated things underground. National Grid is already approved that. They just need permission from the selectmen. Uh, Kevin has submitted work with the director of the D P W about this. I believe everything is okay. I know area brothers who are bonded, contracted, been in the street work. They've already applied for a street open permit. And, uh, Joe and Katie reached out to the neighbors and everyone seemed to like the idea of doing streetwork that and get less telephone poles. Simple as that.
Sounds good to me. I mean, I'd love to see things under that in this town.
Yeah, I've never done one of these in twenty-eight years, um, so I wasn't comfortable saying, sure, I had footwork with muscle, private utility on the road.
Right.
Uh, so I wanted to make it your blessing before we get, and everybody know what was going on, and then we get the ass blocks and they shook his arm.
Did you see any issues with that?
No. As long as they, they do the road to Kevin's specifications.
We just want whatever conduit is built to our specifications, and that'll be outlined in this street open permit.
Okay, we good with that? Questions?
Um, with you, the more underground the better.
Yeah.
We'll be good, especially out here.
Yeah.
We'll be coming to your house, one of the rest of us.
If you see October Fest next year.
Should apply for the.
No, take that one. As long as you're in fact the board, it's a pretty smooth process.
Karen Canfield, any questions?
No, I think the, the, the concerns have been addressed about making sure that, you know, the repairs are done to, to the D P W's satisfaction. Um, but yeah, this is, uh, this should be the wave of the future for resiliency, so it's a, it's a good plan.
Yeah. Okay. Um, any questions from the audience? No, all right. Motion?
Move that the select for grant easement for those underground conduits for primary electrical from existing to liquidable to transform or provide an underground electrical service, uh, one eighty-four Edward Foster Road. Contractal requires the D P W's approval for materials installation as outlined on the street open comments.
Second, move by Mr. Goodrich, second by Ms. Harrison.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for putting it up around. All right, Kevin, Capri? I know you're up for discussing contracts. Is somebody else coming? Welcome tonight, well.
Um, I thought he was, but he'd be happy to fill up and I know it's already.
Are we at that? Um.
As you know, ongoing, we've been updating every June steel plant, you know, as well as all the steel pump stations, improving communications as well as scale us, and it allows the guys to.
improving communications as well as scale us, it more allows the guys to find problems remotely. Turn things off, turn pumps on, uh, do a lot of other miscellaneous things. So this is the next phase in scale update.
And this is coming out of, I would imagine, sewer enterprise?
Yes.
Um, any questions from the board on this?
Now, Susan, this is a different, a new phase, sorry. So this is the fifth phase, yes. So is this, how many more is that?
I think there are two, but I'd have to have will to say confirmation.
More than that scan, that's an area that sounds maybe a bit of that.
Well, we've gone from, from one thing where somebody got a phone call at two o'clock in the morning, got a pump so flowing and have pop on that car and drive out to be able to pull up the pad and be able to try to control what the problems are. So it's improving. At one point, I hate to say this, a few years ago, we were running on Windows two thousand treatment plan. We didn't get any more updates. So it was, it was scary. So it's been a long process. We've had a lot of problems on the last few weeks, but we're, we're getting in much better shape.
About two thousand and two now.
No, it might even like Windows N B or something like that. I was horrified when I started, but, but we're, we're getting there. It's, we're getting a lot more improvements because, you know, you could, you know, if there was, God forbid, there was a leak or something, you could leak a hundred thousand gallons by the time the guy was notified. But now we can turn things off kind of remotely and, and it's very, it's, it's, it's very cool because it's all segregated from the system. And Mike Minichello has it to the nth degree so that it, you know, to, to try to prevent hacking, because that's, that's the biggest fear we have with this is using a way to hack the system. Uh, it is segregated and it's a great system.
Are each of the phases usually around this month? Can't remember. Usually around one.
They vary. I think the last phase was like, it was two more. I want to say it was like three fifty-two.
Oh, really?
Um, but I, I, Nancy can probably remember.
Two eighty-six.
A pass close.
Three sixty-six. And this all just stays with Weston Sampson, all several phases?
We did one R F P originally, and you can't really just all of a sudden switch if you're driving a pool and switch to.
Okay. Uh, any question, additional questions? Now, Karen, any questions from you? No, all right. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, motion?
Move to approve Weston Sampson's scatter five improvements contract twenty-three dash S S dash twenty-three.
Move by Mrs. Connolly, second by Mr. Goodrich. All those in favor, we'll call.
Um, we just need to add the amount of one eighty-six eight hundred.
Oh, sorry about that.
Um, so move to amend in the amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred dollars.
As amended, filled by Mr. Goodrich?
Uh, Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes. All right. We're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. For coming in. All right, next Claudia.
Here she is.
Right.
Claudia Oliver from the golf committee, Willows Law Golf Committee. Yes, and there's a typo here because I'm not the chairperson. But you got, you got nominated to come in as secretary. All right, so as secretary of the Willows Law Golf Committee, which was put together several years ago to, uh, work on the design and development and construction of a clubhouse, and you, and you did a fabulous job. Retired. They did, they did, or it was, and it is. You were efficient and lots of great improvements. Um, so it looks like you're going to ask to disband. Yes, at our last, the attendance has been spotty over the past year, and then at our last meeting, I said, well, we, oh, we need it. And directed mostly Ian.
Right.
And we're, we're not really needed because we don't tell him what to do and make suggestions. He doesn't really need our help anymore to research things. And we all know that if we have an idea, we can just tell.
Right.
Got a good report going there. And I mean, and others too, and just regular plans. Everybody knows that. People have a lot of thoughts and ideas. They can pass them forward, but I kind of think the, you know, the task was met.
Absolutely.
I'm not convinced that, you know, that we're, it's a necessary committee.
I, I saw some emails, so I had an inkling that this was coming. So I know Jim, you kind of talked about it, and you thought they, there was still a need for it now, but as long as Ian's good, you, you find this.
I mean, I had thought the committee could have been helpful with some of the, uh, architecting and things like that. But without lead, who would actually be a communications person to play the help of that? So. As long as, as you said, there are all the resources there. Most of my golf course all the time. Uh, it's been scum with it though.
Okay. Nika was tapping to the expertise that existed on that committee, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll just say one more time before I pass it over to the board. I just want to thank you all. You're a great diverse group that brought in this plethora of different professional expertise, whether it was marketing, construction, restaurant, you know, operation, it just really was. I'd probably say one of the best committees I think we have put together in a long, long time. So, um, I want to thank you for everything that you did, and we'll make sure you get, uh, notes of gratitude out to everybody. Yes.
So and then, and then the, just at that meeting, just before that meeting, somebody was appointed.
I want to contact him.
That person, has he been told?
Yes, I thought.
Because I, I didn't know, so. Anyway, okay.
Yes, we'll find another, find another spot for him.
Yeah, I tried. It wasn't interesting.
Poor guy's on the bond.
He didn't bite, I tried.
He's just joking. Um, anybody else have any other words for Claudia?
Fabulous work, but this is so rare, and it's so brilliant, when people know what this stuff. Look, you don't have to understand how amazing that is. He did, it's, it's fabulous, because now you know, you know, again, still call people back at times. I'm just thrilled with the work that you've done, and thank you. So earnest.
Amazing. It's great. I play off, but it's a nice restaurant. Great view. Karen?
Well, I can say that I heard on the news recently that golf is, I'm on the upswing, that after years of stagnation, that it's growing because of the pandemic, because so many people wanted to get out, and they was ten feet apart. Um, so the, the timing of this couldn't be better, and I'm with Andrew, whenever you have a group that says, we're, we're done, done our job, we're going to move on. It's, it's a win for everybody. So thank you very much to you, Claudia, and to the rest of the committee. And, um, I did know that there was a celebration for, um, yes, Monte Newman, and, uh, you know, he was instrumental and worked on this.
Hugely.
Yeah. So thanks to Monte.
Yes.
And to his family, and to everyone who worked on this. It's a beautiful facility, and we can be proud of it.
Well said.
I appreciate that, Monte.
Yeah. Karen? You have the last word? All right.
Ditto, ditto.
Okay. Um, all right, I guess we have to move. Make motion. Let me do it. We'll move to expand the Willows Law Golf Committee effective immediately with gratitude for their great service, excellent work, time and dedication that they provided to the town decision. Second by Ms. Harrison. All those in favor, sadly?
Um, Ms. Karen?
Hi.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
With gratitude, yes. Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Yeah.
I'll stay later. Okay. Hillary, we'll get notes out to all of them, correct?
Yes, I'll get them. I just want to see what happens tonight, and then you might have told me, no, you've got to stay.
Um, so next, we have Doug Smith, um, Chair of Historic, Historic Commission. He graciously covered all the different alternatives that we have before us with regards to the more, uh, like, properties, and we appreciate you doing that. And so I didn't know if you just wanted to just name and address for the record, and then maybe walk through. We do have all the backup, uh, curious about your perspective as well.
Sure, so Doug Smith, Chair of the Citroen Historical Commission, six ninety-one country institute. And at the, sort of at the woods request, we have some conversation with the head of Karen. Karen, uh, you know, now that the town has purchased the Morgan Lincoln property, so the question, what to do next? So the commission met and we discussed, you know, a few different things, but we thought we'd lay out some alternatives for the board to consider, and hopefully receive some direction so we can explore these further, come back to you with more definitive recommendation. This is what we think should happen. So we went through, really, I could go through them one by one. They all have advantages and disadvantages. Uh, we could do that. Uh, you know, I would say that the reason that C P C approved the purchase of it, you know, still stands. It's a significant historical property institute. It was unprotected. It was in private ownership, and now that it is owned by the town, it is protected, so it won't be torn down or developed. It's also unique because it offers, uh, open space, you know, east of three A for that neighborhood, the Morgan Lincoln neighborhood. And then there's also some opportunities as well for, uh, recreational purposes, you know, from passive recreation, just to be able to watch the property. It's absolutely beautiful. If you knock it out there, I encourage you to go out, you can get it. And also, you know, people had discussed an option of something like a car launch, so that's also another option as well. So it's unique because of its historic nature, because of its age. Uh, and then also, it was not really muddled, which means, you know, nobody went in there years ago and kind of took the whole thing apart. Uh, the mill has had some things done to it over the years. There's a smaller house that's sort of beside the main house. Uh, the town has done some work to it as far as taking out some trees that were causing problems there. Uh, you know, the watch were changed, uh, the heat's been on, electricity's been on. So there is some financial cost as well. So I think it's important at this time to really take the next steps forward and solve it. Let's see that. Uh, we've had a couple of groups out there. We have preservation mass out there who are experts to look at the properties. We have somebody from Doyle's Auction House go in there and take a look through all the contents, although there's nothing in there that's significantly valuable. There's some things in there that are not junk either. We just wanted to make sure that if the town did decide to dispose of some of the assets in there, that we're not going to end up on antique roadshow and there's a boil painting, we're just giving a thousand dollars. So I'm pretty confident. You want to look right before. And then additionally, I know the, uh, conservation commission is here today, giving a look at it. And one of the challenges of that property is that it's on a very narrow road. So if people were going, you'd be able to use it. You have to kind of find a place to go in there and park and get that cleared out. So those are some of the things that have come up to the forefront so far. Uh, but our alternatives were really simply, the first one is created on profit. You know, be friends in Morgan Lincoln. That would allow an organization to go out there, raise funds. The sole beneficiary of it would be the Morgan Lincoln house in the town situation. So that could get some funds in there that would help to do some basic maintenance, uh, that would need to be done on the property and also take care of many of the expenses for the moment. Uh, the second alternative was really, if we invested some funds, was to be able to make the main house and the guest house rentable. So there could be some income coming into the town for that. That would be a little bit more expensive, but it would also have someone on the property. You kind of keep an eye on it. That's one thing that sort of makes you a little bit concerned now is that it is vacant all the time. Uh, there is a, uh, sort of a chain going across the driveway, so it's like people are driving up in there. But still, it's an unoccupied house, so that's the thing to start. Uh, we were approached by somebody who was interested in renting the mill. So the mill that's on the street at one time was a, was a, in the antique shop, for lack of a better word. And somebody approached us on that. The mill itself is filled with all kinds of, I would say, more junk. Uh, and there's also a pipe on the second floor. It appears to be like an asbestos pipe, so that would, that would have to be looked at. It's a little bit more of a challenge. If somebody was ambitious enough that we restored the main house, you know, could that become a museum or rental city store outside group? It's a really expensive option. You have to decide once you go in there is, as you start doing things, you know, how much do you want to do? How extensive of renovation do you want to make? And then the other thing would be to turn it over to some sort of a nonprofit group. Uh, it doesn't yield a bi- financial benefit for the town, but it would alleviate many, uh, operating expenses. The best example I can give you is what we do with, um, Citroen Arts Association, the Yells House. It's a town-owned property, but it's rented and maintained by the Citroen Arts Association. They put a lot of work into that facility. Could you find someone else in a similar situation? And then the final alternative was really to place a historic preservation and desection of the property and sell it for private use. I don't think that was ideal. Uh, you know, the commission considered it because it was really purchased through C P C funds to benefit the town. But that is an alternative, and we wanted to give you sort of every option on the table to consider. I think what would make sense is to create a small house force with a, with a short charge and a short timeframe. Go back to any one of these alternatives you want, explore more. I think in fairness, you'd have to have someone from the conservation commission, someone from the store commission, someone from recreation, to all be able to weigh in on it, depending on what's taking the recreation. That was sort of the summary of everything we had at that moment, and we're happy to hear other ideas, hear other suggestions from the select board, sort of take on matching those and what you'd like to do next.
How many people are on the commission now, mental of that, subsided? And one question I had, and I was actually talking to Karen Campfield earlier. What's the relationship with conservation and historic commission? Like, what funds have we bought into property in C P C?
Okay, it's got.
Yes, right. Okay, so it really falls under historic.
The funds did from C P C.
That's my thought.
But I think it was just always the thought that it's much more than just the house.
Right.
When we look at property, so what adds more?
It is being from property I had wanted. Um, no, thank you for all this. I, I just have one additional question to bring up to the public.
Sure.
Are, are there any, you know, I was looking today, got distracted with my hotel. Um, but are there any, you know, national federal preservation funds that we can tap in to help us with this? You know, everything that I looked at just seemed to be granted, and there are organizations out there that would really dial in and help us restore this.
You know, it could be. I'd have to do some more investigation on that. A lot of it is a grant, it's just a little store. Oftentimes, there's a matching component to that, too. So there'd be C P C funds or that be on.
And is that where you see the final C three coming in to?
You know, I just, yeah, you know, I saw that as a way to sort of easily get private funds. Instead of the, you know, grants tend to come with restrictions. Private gifts would have fewer.
Right.
You may not need a lot to begin to cover some of the expenses that, you know, to get in with it, or what you're seeing. I don't care.
I'll just, Karen, I'll start with you. I, I know we have questions. I've been talking, we've done it for a long time about this, and I know Karen has, and. I think I have a couple of just immediate questions. One is, is the building habitable right now?
No. No, subject exist.
Okay. So in my opinion, that's key to this whole thing, because I'm more in favor of trying to get someone in there so that the house is taken care of, and empty houses have a way of deteriorating much faster than houses that are occupied.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and as much as I would like to think that we're going to get soon in North Citroen, um, I don't think that's going to happen in time for us to do what I would like us to do with this project. Because I personally think that, um, town meeting voted to buy the property, including the buildings on the property, and it was both historic and it was meant for open space. So I feel as though to, to go to the length of just selling it, which I know there is some appetite in town for selling it, um, I don't think that's a good idea. So I thank you that you considered that, but, um, the thought that I had. So I thank you that you considered that, but the thought that I have is, is that, and I mentioned this to Doug at some point, and it seems to me as though situat has a real story to tell here with this house, this property, including the lineage of the property, the name of the property. And so what I would like to explore is seeing if we could interest this old house to this property as a project. And if you watch this old house, there's always the owners kind of on site. And since we don't really have an owner per se, if we had a person who was occupying the property, overseeing the property, restoring the property, we could use CPC money for the, the funds we need to do what we need to do. But they provide labor and skilled labor at that, and they specialize in this type of a house and a property. And for me, it also means that this old house would, I think, find situat a beautiful town to, you know, explore, which they do a lot when they've got a house new for it or exhale them or whatever. So I think this is a real opportunity if, if we could sell this concept to this old house. And the way they work, you know, this is not going to happen overnight, any of this. So I guess immediately I would be, I would want us to make sure that we're protecting the property. But on a more long-term basis, I would like to see if we could find someone who is a history buff, who might like to sort of be the this old house homeowner, if you will, to work with them. And I just think it's such a unique story. And I don't know that they've ever done a story about a town buying historic property on a beautiful piece of property. It's almost pristine when you look at it. So that's what I would say about that. I'm also immediately concerned that, is there suddenly we can get parking up there so that people can actually enjoy the open space that's there? And the reason I say that is because we owned it now for, I forget now, because it's been going on for a long time. A couple of years, there is no parking up there. You can't park up there right now. And, you know, I certainly don't want to bother the neighbors up there with people parking willy-nilly all over the place. But if, I think we put aside money through town meeting to put a parking lot of some kind up there, and I'm not talking about asphalt with stripes or anything. I'm talking about gravel or whatever the hard pack is, so that if you have room for like five, six cars, seven cars, we're not taking a huge amount and it won't restrict us going forward on what we eventually decide to do with the property. So Doug, thank you for being able to comment on this, I appreciate it. And I would like to see a group like Gulf, who knows what, people who would like to be, you know.
Yeah.
Need to find a good, yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, that would be, if you create that nonprofit, I think you also have neighbors around you to have a vested interest in that property.
Yes, yes. Before I go this way, I just want to talk about the parking, you know, I think, I know funds were approved for that, but I, you know, the decision was made just to wait, see what the direction is, what we spend in the middle there.
So I remember Penny's articles, would give a fair approval for the engineer to do the wetland flagging, do all the preliminary work necessary to see what you would have to do with the parking lot, but to go no further, not to design the parking lot, layout the parking lot, just do the preliminary work that we'll have to do no matter what we do up there. And then until this board makes a decision, we're not going to go forward with doing the actual parking. And the other issue with the parking is, no one on the property. I do get a little wary of opening that up and letting people up there parking, walking, and things like that, just because it is kind of isolated, except for the house next door. It is an isolated piece of property, which is why we changed it off when we bought it.
But to your point, the house next door, there is no delineation to the property, so it's very easy to go onto their property unknowingly. They have a dog, it's very easy for a dog to go over there unknowingly, so it can be, you know, some issues.
With the parking, we've started the preliminary steps, and then we'll get that information, and when this board's ready to proceed, we can give the engineer the go-ahead if that's the direction we want to go, actually go and design. I don't know if it's a design construction, we're not construction, are you?
That's part of the engineering.
What's the next?
That, that's been done, those first phases, Jim, they've been completed, I have a plan. Wetlands delineation, riverfront delineation.
I can copy that, I can copy that, please.
Yes, I will, if you will copy that. So that's been done, and I'm just waiting to be allowed to do the next step when we go to conservation. But because the riverfront, you know, they have to go through those steps to get that, that committee done. And Frank has voted with the new neighbor there, and that new neighbor was on conservation in the town they came from, and he is all in favor of this, so that's wonderful.
Okay.
Wonderful thing.
Well, we did, that's as good. And we're going to go to the board for a start.
Sure. So I'll say where my mind is, so I think the short term, I think you have to look at the, are the possible to protect our investment. Make sure, as you said, it's something, because you're having a abandoned building, it's just, you're asking yourself a problem, so I don't know what. Short-term plan is that we actually figure something out. I'm in love with that committee, I like the idea of having that task force. Start with any and every preservation fund possible across the country to see if there's any money that's there. I agree, I think it's a bit difficult and disingenuous to say, I don't want to sell it, what are we going to do? That being said, I also don't think that we're going to have the short-term funds to actually do something fully meaningful, like a waterfront building or something, I think that's a ways off. So I think, like, if we're going to go in that direction with the task force, to realize that there is almost like a stock gap or just real. I mean, I don't know the temperature of the border, I don't think we're going to be spending most of the dollars to restore things. Or do we have funds?
I have been excited about this property for a very long time. It is an amazing location. It gives us access to water, access to the Gulf, a large access there for half of recreation, which I spend a lot of time right paddling right in front of it. The house as well has great potential. And I sat at a town meeting and really voted for it for many reasons, so I would have a lot of, it would be really difficult for me to think about selling it. I really want, I think a committee can help us maybe find some money, because I agree, we, we have a lot of wants in this town. We have, which is great, we want a new school, we want a new pickleball, we want, say, we were spending money on the lighthouse, there's a lot of things that we want. And this warrants spending time and money on. And I think that having a committee, we may be able to find some creative ways to, to solve this. I got the lighthouse for this on my bus tour situat, my historical bus tour situat, we swung by the lighthouse. And it was mentioned that way back, the select board barely voted to save that. I think it was one vote away from completely destroying it, so, and leveling it. So I kind of took that to mean it's really important to preserve what we have. And that to me is like the next, the next level of what we have. That needs to be preserved. Well said, what are your ideas of this old house? Karen Cantfield, we'll go to you.
Thanks. Hi Doug, I'm sorry, I'm not in the room, I'm recovering from, nobody wanted me. I, I want to commend the, the historic commission for really laying this out and doing the homework. And especially for acknowledging that this is a, a property that has many uses for public, for public use. And I think I agree with my colleagues that forming a small task, get some direction from us, which you're getting tonight. Have a small task force which includes representatives from those other uses so that we have this as a, you know, we're looking at, we don't go, oh, we forgot to think about whatever, is a really good idea. I agree that, I think that the options you've laid out are almost a timeline. I see it as you start with, you know, a task force to sort of dig into everything. The second is, I, I would definitely advocate for, you know, a one to two, you know, a shorter term lease on the property to secure it, to, to, you know, to make sure that we've got, you know, a steward there like we do on other properties. And that that lease obviously would, would have language in it that would, that whoever's there understands that the property itself is, 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 is a public, you know, so we don't preclude the use of public access to the property itself. That would be important. And then simultaneously, and I think the task force could work on the details of this, is looking to form a 501(c) to have a, a organization that can pull all those threads together for the next steps. So that, that gives us a short-term and a long-term strategy. As we've discussed at length in this board and with the historic, you know, I would like to see a 501(c) expand to, to encompass a lot of our properties, but this is a good place to start. The only, I, I had one question, I'm glad Penny's in the room, is, did we, did we begin the process of putting this property in conservation? I couldn't remember that detail, like is Wildland?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, I didn't think so, but I wanted to check. And the other, other question I had was, Jim, one of, you know, the discussion of leasing out the old antique shop for use for a retail establishment, has that ship sailed because it's been dormant for so long and it's a non-conforming?
Yeah, I mean, it's a non-conforming use, there's no plumbing in that building, so you have to have plumbing.
Couldn't set up a retail, but they?
It's, I don't believe it's a retail zone, plenty of what's not here, I have to check if it's in a residential zone. It's four years for the non-conforming use before it lapses.
Oh, okay.
There's no heat in that building, there's no plumbing in that building, it's just a bomb space, really. So before you could do anything, you'd have to put in a septic system, put in a bathroom for heat, probably insulation, I don't think it's insulated a couple of times, I've been there, it's either boiling hot or freezing cold, but you'd have to take the other steps. Really, the first thing you have to do is put in a septic system. There's a catch 22, because the septic system, the size of the septic system will depend upon the ultimate use of the property.
Right.
So, and the septic system has to be for the main house, the guest house, and if we wanted size four, wouldn't be a big difference to add. Yeah, the carriage house, I'll call it carriage house. But the septic system will be an expensive proposition. As Penny said, the property is subject to the Rivers Act, which has ended in 200 feet or now to the body of water, and subject to those rules, plus all the town's wetting rules and things like that. So it's not an easy piece of property to get back into shape. I don't know if you want me to keep going, I was, I was wanting to put the, the sell the property option on the table. As Susan mentioned, CPC is under tremendous amount of pressure right now, everybody's going to the CPC for projects. They're getting more and more requests, more and more money. They do have an example, when I was in Linfield, the town, it was called Center Farm, which was seven acres, literally in the center of town. Was an antique house sign, was going to be torn down and redeveloped into four homes. So the town purchased it for 1.4 million, sold it for 935,000, with historic restrictions, never can be subdivided, scary cannot be altered. I drove by it the other day on the way to Nana's house, it is absolutely breathtaking, that property, what the owner has done to it. So I don't think we should take that off the table, because I think when we start looking at some of these costs, it might be something we want to come back to, but the first thing you have to do before we can do anything, if you want to put anything up there, if you want to use the property, I think someone has to be at the property, have someone at the property, you do a septic system, which means I'd have to have an idea of exactly what type of use we want, and then go to CPC for next spring to get money to design and install a septic system. Start around $75,000 for that, in Duell.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's all of them.
You don't know?
By the way, I don't know. Is this to preserve a primary historic?
What's for the rehabilitation of the historic structure?
Yeah, it might be, restoration. Couple of things, point of clarification, I saw some head nods. So I'm going to redirect the question to Penny, what Karen Cantfield asked about being under the conservation.
All right.
Have you submitted it to someplace?
Wildland's trespass looking, has looked at the open space, okay, and we're waiting to get clean and done. The wetlands delineation, the, the thick block lines and so forth and so on, so there's nothing, okay? Because our understanding was that the field would be under conservation. So if that was true, that would have to have a C1, okay? So they have been out there and they looked at it, but we haven't gone farther because I didn't have a plan until last week, I had been.
Well, I would recommend that we hold off doing anything like that.
Yeah.
Until we put this.
Well, because the field has to be where you put the septic system.
Right, that, or if it's some use that comes that you can rent out part of the field, whatever, you know, for, I don't know, whatever. I don't want to put it in some sort of conservation restriction yet, until we look at it in totality. You know, just, we need to be careful with that. So I'm in agreement with the, the subcommittee. I'm also in agreement that we bought it, town meeting asked us to buy it and preserve it. So I think we should make any effort to do that. I agree, if, you know, these properties are, they are a train, they're burning out of town to manage when we don't have the resources. And I understand, you know, James put that there, but I think our town's people already spoke that they want us to try to preserve this. So I think it's us to take the next step and, and bring that committee together. Is that a committee that we all foresee under the commission? We kind of bring together, I obviously, I think we need someone from conservation, right? Yourself, select board. Well, let's see, probably one that is really interested, go-getter, sort of a person, spread to your citizens to sort of drive it, yeah. Like we've got the all part of the stuff.
Or if you put up, maybe to the town, if there's anyone interested in starting on this task force.
Yeah, pick it up and actually just invite them to an informational meeting so they don't feel like they're being captured illegally.
I would just ask that the select board really come up with a charge, exactly what you want this task force to do. When you run for a timeline, just so there's no kind of mission, or mission order, you know, you kind of want it to be, what you, what you want us to do, what you want this task force to do, when you want to answer that part.
Yeah, anytime, May. I think the Citroen Arts Association example of that house, they've been extremely good stewards of, of the house. They have come to CPC over the years, and Doug, you sat there when they've been there, with extremely modest requests to keep the building preserved. And a lot of it's been things like drainage, getting it painted, you know, and, and really, they've been terrific. And they pay us a dollar a year in rent. But, you know, it preserved a piece of property in this town that was literally about to fall down. We have, we have plenty of examples in town of, of historical society renting out properties that they own, as well as properties that we own. So we do have a certain amount of experience and expertise in how to manage this sort of a property or a project. So I'm, I'm all for the task force, and I'm all for coming up with more specific timelines and immediate needs to make sure the house doesn't fall down. Do you want to say, Doug, putting together a charge?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, yes. So, but Karen, take that on, and I'll review it, and then bring you, yeah.
That's good.
That sound good?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work and all the printers, I'm sorry, get yours a comment in the back. Sir, did you?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself, we, my wife and I are the neighbors next door.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I had the.
Just your name and address, sir, just for the record, you had everybody say that, just for the record, your name and address.
Sherman Smith and Linda Heath, 16. Uh, Sherman Smith and Linda Heath, sixteen Morey.
Welcome.
Uh, yeah, we, uh, looked at the place back in February, I think, uh, and, uh, purchased it in August first, um, but, uh, we're, we're excited to be there. Uh, I, I, as Penny mentioned, I, I was a land steward up in Acton where we lived for, uh, many years. And later I, uh, last, uh, probably eight, six, eight years, uh, we lived in Dennis and I helped with the Dennis ones, uh, Dennis Conservation Land Trust, uh, there. And, uh, I, I, I'd be willing to help out, uh, and I, I, I've been informed that Morse Engineering is going to be doing a survey, uh.
Yeah, no, they.
Yeah.
I have.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll be interested in taking, uh, looking on that and seeing, so we can, uh, keep the property, uh, good-looking with the basements taken out. You know, for how much, uh, use.
Great. Well, thank you. We have your name on record, so.
And my, my wife is much more organized and, uh, better planning than I.
She's got ass hair.
And yes, sir, to the left.
Uh, Jim Blonsky at Thirty Hollow Streets and I'm a member of the historical, they should also, uh, local historian. But, uh, but, uh, just a couple of things, comment on that's come up. One, uh, there is money, uh, the mass preservation has grants, uh, and they have grants that you do some, pay for some things that, you know, grants, they don't allow you to do, paint the house. Uh, they don't have a ton of money, so they grant you like twenty thousand dollars. And we did have one of their, uh, voting passing association, Jeff Gange come and look at the house, but I mentioned, very impressed, everybody's, the progress, very impressed. Uh, another thing, uh, I'm, I'm great to hear people are interested in keeping the house where its historical value. Uh, and it really is a gem, casual place. Uh, you mentioned some things that are special. I think it's up there with the Los Angeles Tower and the Lighthouse as a prior for radio towers, cameras. Uh, so I'm definitely strongly support, uh, keeping its historical meaning and value intact. Uh, you got the Lincoln connection, even in Haimon, the Lincoln House has no connection to Adrian Lincoln, so they have similar last name. Uh, Morikai comes from Samuel, who lives across the street from the country, the house that he lived. Uh, it's his son, uh, it's a word I make in Haimon. There's been a struggle between Bohasset or Haimon, Michigan, situated for that property. Uh, it's right on the boundary line of Plymouth and, uh, vegetation colony and Massey. That's where that plaque is. One of the first governors, I think he was the first governor of Plymouth Colony. And we've been slow to negotiate a settlement to draw that boundary there. So it's, I'm just there. And a lot of education regarding to that house, it's not hard. Uh, we've had people look at the house, the contents, a lot of people have been in there. Uh, Doyle, Chris Garby Doyle was gracious enough to come, uh, for the second time, went free in the summer. Doug was there, I was there, maybe less, married quarter from the historical society. We just wanted to check one more time. If Doug said that we, it wasn't something there that, uh, we didn't give away basically, you know, throwing, that was, had some value. Uh, and, you know, he pointed out that there's nothing in this, the money, uh, fancy brochure for hundreds of thousands of dollars. But there's some stuff there, it's number two, three, hundred, four hundred bucks, a lot of stuff in the eighteen twenties and thirties. There's still stuff in the house that's, it's not junk. Uh, but that property and, um, mill, at some point they have to be cleaned up. Somebody, um, being there, it's just going to have to be assessed. Somebody's been asked that they don't. Uh, but we won't be throwing away something that's incredibly valuable. Uh, I think the next step, now we've had people look at the contents of these buildings, we could get a preservation of a perpetual part of the story in there that tells what we have. So what is the house? Is there anything that's seventeenth century that's in there? Maybe the chimney, maybe not. It's from the eighteenth century, so you don't want to start going in there doing some renovation without knowing exactly, uh, what's there. So that would be a recommendation for me. Uh, to have a architectural story going in, so this chimney is on the seventeenth century, it was part of the house, this is nineteenth century, whatever. So that would, that would, you know, both the contents of the house and the house itself, what's, what is it? I don't know. Uh, and then after that, maybe options are over there and something should be there at some point, probably makes sense. To me, again, it's a special place. Hopefully, the town can do something to it. And there are examples too. I, I spent a lot of time looking at other towns. Uh, our Yayden Marshfield, probably closely down there, the ice, there's no house. Uh, that's owned by the association that bought in nineteen twenties. Uh, and they own it, town, seriously, not going to the blacksmith shop that's there. Uh, but that house is owned by at least the association. Uh, and they owe the CPC if they need something like a new roof or something, but they, they, they earn about three thousand dollars from using the little fundraising, it'll cost about twenty-seven thousand dollars to them. You can get their task force online, it's in the five oh one C. Yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand bucks in there. Uh, so they, they have some money. Uh, then there's the Danny Webster's. But that's all by the town. They lease it out to a trust, Danny Webster wants the trust, this league trust. Who takes care of the property. If you ever end, we'll either run it though, so she does. Two different houses. And then they're seeing a roll standard, sort of elevation. And October first, they have their host or annual host or, I think it will be seventh. Uh, and then the Lincoln House is on that, they just bought it last year. The CPC funds made a raise, made a raise of a million dollars for that one.
And where's that one?
Beans.
Okay.
We're in center for it.
Okay.
Uh, every collection for us. Uh, so enough.
No, well, thank you. I think, um, you, you brought up a lot of great, like, next steps and things that we probably want to make sure that is in the charge, right? We all pull that together.
Do the options on the contents of it, or do you?
I don't think, yeah, yeah.
Put out a bid for entrepreneur crazier and maybe see what it is.
So I, I guess I would only.
It's called the yard sale.
Right, yeah, you're saying part of the charge, I'm starting to find it.
Yeah, first opening it up, people, you know, what people like, yeah, go like other people's.
Hi, I'm John Wicker, I'm associate member of the Star Commission in River Park. Probably more to what I want to talk about, I'm tied from career, senior administration finance in the university, sort of, worked at the University of Massachusetts. Hawaii, planning assistant, I think. I think something that you're talking about, the committee suggesting is good, but you may want a separate task force for people who are skillful about grantmanship, who are knowledgeable about grant resources, at least how to find them. It just works at whether we can find private grant funding, private partnership of the corporation or federal, certainly federal state funding. Um, when I was working for the state board of higher ed, not that we, no sex, we didn't apologize. That was a very useful partnership operation where they used an historic house on campus for advertising, occasionally they'd bring in models and they'd get. And that, that you don't see in America's evening, it was in this other house. But in turn, they gave a lot of money to restorations. Some of this stuff is out there. So I suggest, and we have a lot of interesting people in Citroen, but if we're not to make them have this kind of experience, grantmanship going after this. They would just look at that. If they hit gold, it might influence what you do about this. Or you may just be able to find corporate, state, federal funding that'll help me maintain the property. But I'd suggest there's almost a separate task force that's all we're doing, is what we're doing, is the money. You want people to have a little bit of experience with that. Where your task force is conservation, this one happens, it's looking for town, but you, it's so.
No, it's a great idea.
That's why it's two sets.
No, it's great, two sets. Um, two licks, okay. No, yes, yeah, so there you go. Uh, so thank you. I think it's great advice. Uh, okay, so I think we, we have our, our plan, we'll get a charge and we'll pull those together. All right, thanks. Doug, thanks so much for being down with me too.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. All right, let's see. We are actually next. Since we already did the marketing, um, I know we do need to talk about a special town meeting date for the, I don't know, the children's questions. Uh, does any G water protect this or?
So as the chair already knows, in attendance at the school, um, how do the school building committee meetings? They have, the architect, the open plan have been using that date in their, um, presentations, which are publicly available of May eighth. So since this is going to involve a lot of information, I'm hopeful for, I'm aware of the right front, I still want to find that date. I've been going forward, Kathy, the town board has already confirmed the month, that he's available, the school gymnasium is available and the sound and the year is available. So that way, those reservations could be put in place.
So I think we have to back up a little bit and, and explain why we need this. Um, so you want to back up? Just, just a teeny bit, so I'll just, um, there, the meeting with the, um, MSBA, um, has to be submitted on a certain date, I'm trying to get it right here. Um, which kind of conflicts or isn't in time enough for us to, to access this at our own annual town meeting. So there's a conflict with dates. So in order for the town to keep this project moving, we need to set a special town meeting specifically to address, um, the kind of rate pushing the school project or the Catholic school project. Um, because it has to be after the MSBA meeting.
And hopefully before the ballot votes, so there wouldn't have to be two special elections. And this was similar to what happened with the senior center. The senior center was voted on on May nineteenth. A special time meeting. It also makes that time meeting only about school. Which I think people have a lot to, a lot of questions if they want it, and, um.
Cause when's our annual town meeting?
April eighth.
April eighth. The MSBA meeting is April twenty-fourth. So it's after that. So that's why we're looking forward to add an additional special town meeting.
And we also add a special election.
No, this will be squeezed right in between. I answered that question too, because I thought we needed a certain amount of time between a special town meeting and a, the execution vote.
I think you can do it right the next day if you want to.
I guess that's weird, that's what we found out.
But Kathy needs the board to vote the question thirty-five minutes.
I'm not suggesting we do that. I'm saying, legally and speaking, you could have the election the next day, legally speaking. It's not a good idea.
Any deal of one, maybe election.
Right, correct. So, yeah. Okay, questions?
Yep, so I'm on the election, so May eighth would be the town meeting and then the election date is.
Maybe Tuesday.
Saturday, the eighth.
Ten days later.
Correct.
And I know legally we can do whatever we want.
It's time, you know.
Is that responsible to educate?
Well, they're already embarking on, um, public education. Uh, so they don't have to wait, you can educate all the way through special town meeting. Um, if it fails by some reason, a special town meeting, it's still on the ballot. So it could pass at the ballot or fail. And if it passed, then you can call another special town meeting to appropriate the money that passed, the S L. Either failed, there are reinforcements, um, should that happen. I know it gets confusing.
And in terms of education, I think education is that it's tight going into town meeting.
Yeah.
With people trying to, now we'll bring people out to the vote, but once they have their final design and their numbers, then they'll start doing the, the round robin. Going to the different groups, going to the different committees and doing that education like what has been done with senior center, public safety complex and all of those. And then you start picking up people and getting the board out. I think it's also, it may be easier for supporters and those who do not support the project to say, okay, this, these are the dates that you have to come out, either way that you feel about projects.
It is odd, it's tight, definitely.
The town meeting goes to thirds, right?
That means two thirds, election is up in terms.
So you really need to do the education prior to the town meeting, so you get people out there, give it some stress. And the questions only passed.
Question of the ballot is what you are.
No, no, I'm saying, uh, the special time meeting is only a pass fail, which knows.
Instead of pass, like two thirds.
So they give you changes to the, to the, I'm just, I'm trying to.
Yeah, there's really, you really can't amend it.
No.
You can't amend it. If you screw with it too much, that passes up the ballot question. I mean, it really is, this is what we're proposing. This is what the state has said, we can go forward, this is what goes forward.
And, uh, the town meeting article has to be approved by MSBA to be in their format. They're very, I mean, that's the reason why we'll split up before town four.
Yeah, I, I'm going to probably, originally, quote for this, well, tell you what, I feel uncomfortable, there'll be one thousand people, to be honest. Eight thousand, we're going all three, twelve thousand people are going to go, actually, oh. You're talking.
Not really.
Well, they could. Eight thousand?
What we have, can't remember what we have on the season, there wasn't, what a huge turn on the season.
I think it's a bit larger because it's a school. It depends.
Yeah.
On the games are on Saturday morning, who forgot?
They do have an override about question committee, um, that was formed in the legislature, so they are, they're coming back.
I'm just nervous.
Town election, you can still do, you can still do absentee ballot.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Karen Cantfield, do you have any questions for Nancy or comments?
No, no questions. I think, you know, a lot of this is simply procedural. It has to fit into a certain calendar and and these are the dates that make it work and we can't push back our, and we, and we have our hands tied on the date for town meeting, so. Um, you know.
Well, historically in the past, we were one of the earlier towns for town meetings, so that's sort of what, through MSBA a little bit.
True, and then the MSBA has their schedule and you just slot into their schedule. They don't care what's.
Also fairly early tax break, I think, don't I know it's early? It's not uncommon for school vote to be by itself.
True.
It's not for us, but that's okay.
Well, except for the fact that when we did the middle school, we also had the public safety building on the ballot. The public safety building had more votes than the school.
I mean.
But there's no other question on the ballot, so people are going to come out and vote based on it being a school project, period. Whereas the last time this go-around, people were conflicted and people did come and vote in favor of the public safety building and against the school.
Well, there will be elected, there will be elected positions. So it's, it's, it's a regular election. Yes, regular election. So there'll be elected positions in addition to that question.
True. I know it's not early voting. When is officially absentee, it's, it's forty, ten days.
Yeah.
So some people could vote prior to town.
They might, I believe so.
And a school project, I don't know how many people make up their minds in the room. Like, most people go to that meeting either one period.
For, in all due respect, that's not for us, people vote for us to get into their minds. It's just making sure that we do it in a way and it's proper and or how people do it, it doesn't matter. Like, I just, it makes me have these, if people could vote.
We have to do it five o'clock, five o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Well, you raise a good point. So if, as you were saying, as if, um, well, sorry, my voice is just non-existent. Um, write and balance, whatever, that's ten days before the election. Like, when does that? Writing balance, whatever. That's ten days before the election. Like, when does that open up? Because if this, if this
I believe it opens up before that. But they don't have to be back by then. So, I can get my absentee ballot because I'm not gonna be here.
Right.
Wait. Get all my information, that vote. Mail it later.
So, it's gonna be on the ballot regardless. That's the point. Regardless of what happens in special town.
If we did a special election after. Because what if I, what if, oh, I voted for, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go to town meeting second.
That's all the time.
Well, the issue would be I voted because I can't be at town meeting and I'm gonna miss the election. So, they vote for. A lot of people just don't go to town meetings like, oh, school, it's gonna pass. Everybody else is gonna go. I know you three are gonna go, so I don't have to go. Well, then you three sit thinking the same thing. I don't have to go because those three are gone. That's really the job of the people who are the opponents, are the opponents.
I was just gonna say that.
Make sure I get all my people to town meeting to the election. It's such a, it's such a higher bar at town meeting.
Yeah.
I, I just don't want people on either end to be stuck with our waters, didn't want to go, didn't want it to pass. Having that weird window of possible.
Yeah.
I mean, again, I'm just nervous about it.
I do think Nancy's track, there's not a lot of people go to town meeting or go to the ballot, saying, we really don't know. If people have their minds made out on stuff like this.
Well, to Andrew's point, you want to be sure that we give people, we have a lot of opportunity to make their, their correct decision and what the, what they're voting on.
And again, I think.
Procedure.
But if you think that it's really not gonna change between, you know, it's not who else is it? Amendable, amendable.
But I think the opponents and the proponents have to get all that information
Oh, of course.
prior into town meeting. So, even some of the absentee voters, they have the opportunity to see both sides. Because again, when you get to town meetings, I just sway some of the town meeting. You wanna get to that.
Before.
Forehand.
Yeah.
So, they're leading whichever way you want them to lead when they go in.
Well, like you said, that's up to those two.
Those two groups, right. So, yeah, so, yeah, it's your job visually to set the town meeting, vote the ballot question, and those things. So, that is individuals. As a board, you actually can take that.
Or, or we, I'm sorry. So, I mean, we're setting the date for the
Special Town Meet.
For the special town meeting. But that also doesn't necessitate that this is today.
There is no special election.
Oh, yeah.
You could.
We decide later, right? We're not saying they have to vote on that day if you want to spend the night at a special. We don't even know if you're at the cell on the election, but they could hold, couldn't they hold the election a month later?
Well, what it's gonna say is gonna be an annex agenda, I'm sure. The only thing I'm thinking of is if you decided that you wanted to have a separate election, move that town meeting beyond the ballot. Because it's great. I would be, as a citizen, I would be confused. If I just went to town meeting and voted something and told I had, told I had to vote on the ballot, I would expect at the ballot that it would be on that ballot the following election. So, if you decide that you want to do it completely in separate, move the town meeting beyond the May eighteenth, nineteenth election.
So, they're both post.
So, they're both completely.
Semi-regular election.
I, I just think as a citizen, you'd be, you'd be confused. You'd expect to, if you were supporting whatever project, and when you went to went to the town election, it would be on there.
But now you went to June.
Yeah, right.
Then you got the bar, you put people going. It just, I thought what I think, remember, it doesn't matter the order, whether it's town meeting, election, election, town meeting. Doesn't matter. So, just scenario, we could actually move the election ahead of town. The statute doesn't speak to which one comes first. It just says it has to pass both.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the proper time. People are confused. I'm a little confused. They're giving her enough time and they're not. Yeah, I know you legally do it, but
And it can't be at the April town meeting because of the NSBA schedule. The reason they don't want to do it is the NSBA will not have voted to approve the project. So, you're putting something before voters without.
That's pending NSBA approval.
Yeah, which is kind of nice. We don't, we expected them to approve, but that's a lot to ask of voters if they don't know what's certain. Now, here, the, I did look at the votes as the discussions continuing. The senior center special election had thirty eight hundred people come out. And then the schools and public safety were just over fifty five hundred. To get like this.
Six thousand.
I'm not sure what percentage that is of the voters, but.
Yeah, it's like fourteen thousand percent of voters there, there. There is no doubt it's tight. And I agree with Nancy. I don't think you want to put an article on annual town meetings saying, pending NSBA approval, because the finances are escaping.
Well, because we want to know.
Right.
Know what they voted.
Correct.
It'd be harder to educate people one way or the other that it occurred, didn't occur, right? But that's why we were trying to have these discussions early rather than later, because these are all valid points.
It seems like it's two weeks. Is there a reason why it's two weeks after the board meeting? Is it two weeks or?
This was the date that they started using publicly. So, that's why, because it's also a Wednesday, so it's out there.
The special town meeting, five eight, it's a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
Well, we can change that, so.
But it's, it's in the pub, public ground. That's, you can do whatever you want.
I mean, doesn't mean you can't change it.
Nope, you can do whatever you want.
I mean, if, if the concern is to give.
That's the date that they've been using. That's the date that we've confirmed the three items can happen, but the gymnasium is available, the moderator is available, and the sound. If there's another date.
Did he ask for any other date?
No, we were going off the date that they've already put down.
I understand that.
So, if you want another date, absolutely. You can go back and check those, the availability, and then bring it back to the next meeting.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to address Andrew's concern, right? That it is tight, because it is tight. So, April twenty fourth is Wednesday. May eighth is two weeks after that. I mean, that's the other thing too, right? Don't we usually do our town meetings on a, on a Monday? I mean, what if we did it Monday, April twenty ninth? That way, we're giving the citizens more time to evaluate. See, I mean, I think he raises a good point. It's very tight.
I'm knocking on the opposite side that if you have that special town meeting and it passes.
You get them out there.
Yeah, but the momentum is there and it's kind of like, just do it.
Yeah.
Right? So, it's.
But also a Wednesday, and we usually do our meetings on Mondays, right? Don't we?
Yeah, it's normally a Monday.
I'm sorry?
It's normally a Monday.
Yeah.
I, I, I didn't say.
I didn't say.
I didn't take the date. I kind of wiped the ones out there, but whatever the board decides, and however, if the board decides to take a vote contingent on everyone being available, whatever the board wants to do, or we can put it off to the next meeting.
When you say what's out there, is that what the school, the committee looking at the seat?
Oh, yeah, the architects started using this date a couple of meetings ago, and I called them on it and said, it's not been, a date is not gonna set by the select board. But since they've been using it, they've been having public meetings and posting various items.
No, I know it's been, I mean, very, very small attendance. I don't have a chance.
Well, I just was curious, not so much on that, but if they would be ready. If the
Well, they'll be ready as soon as the SBA says.
As soon as they say yes, they'll be ready. So, anyway.
They would have to have everything on the order.
Okay.
Why don't we go back and check? I don't think we have to do it tonight.
Well, we have our meeting tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Then, so, while with the Halloway, the Halloway project meetings. No, the Halloway, sorry, the Halloway project, I'm sorry, I'm running low cylinders. The Halloway School Building Committee is tomorrow, so maybe if we can have Kathy check. I mean, I think moving it to a Wednesday, it's just, we get so much flack for always doing these meetings on different dates. And then we keep it consistently on a Monday. We get flack for that too, but you might get more on a Wednesday, because more events are going on or whatever. I don't know. So, I'd rather be consistent and keep it on a Monday, which is, that's what we typically do.
Such a fun.
And if we can move it up to give more room in between the SPM and the actual vote that addresses your concern, which I think is valid, just from an educational aspect. People don't pay attention until it's time. We all know that. So, maybe we look at that, because we don't have to vote it tonight, correct? Me, would be nice to, but I think we've gotta go back and take a look at a Monday and see if it can you know, be closer to the the twenty fourth. Is that sound like the plan?
It's, we're gonna nail this set.
Oh, jeez. Because we could either look at Monday, the twenty ninth, or Monday, the sixth.
Yeah.
Don't say anything to Nancy and Natalie immediately. April twenty ninth or May sixth. Because I suspect if the MSBA meeting is on the twenty fourth, they render that decision on that day, correct?
I don't know.
Well, so.
Let's ask that tomorrow. If you answer that question wrong, maybe that's why they put it, it's away on it.
It might be, yeah.
It's just pathological that we're talking to.
Well, says on their feasibility study, project scope and budget approval. MSBA board meeting for twenty four, twenty four, so it's.
Sounds like they'll prove it then.
Yeah, that's the meeting.
Okay.
Next. All righty. Sorry, Nancy.
That's how we start early, so maybe we have plenty of time to consider it.
Okay. Karen Canfield, anything? You good?
I'm good. I'm my head's spinning with numbers right now.
Okay. All right, so we will now assign more articles for special town meeting. We have a first hour, however, I can take a look at if we want to. Not a lot to take, since we have a lot on the consent agenda. Anybody will look at the, well, let's just go down. What we've done in prior years, we have assigned each one, just in case something gets pulled, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so we usually do that. We'll assign each one and then, just in case one gets pulled, so you just be prepared to speak to that in case it gets below our consent.
About unpaid prior year bills.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm happy to kick it off with one and two. You want, does anybody want budget reconciliation?
I'll do it.
Karen Connelly. Four, establishment of special purpose stabilization funds.
Sure.
Andrew. Old Stockbridge landfill. Somebody want that?
Yeah, oh.
All right, I'll take it. Karen Canfield. Look at you.
Sign her for that.
I'd be happy to take that one.
Okay, Karen Canfield, number five, number six, maintenance.
I haven't taken one yet.
Nope. Do you want, six, six? Susan. Seven, Rand Nash.
I'm gonna take that one.
Maybe you can use that for the check.
Yes.
Do you want to do the?
Transports as well, just so.
Sure, yes.
Retirement of debt.
We check out.
Yeah. Rescission about borrowing.
Happy to do it.
Capital and return plan. I'm happy to do it.
I'm sorry, who's doing, eleven?
Eleven, me, Laura Connelly.
Okay.
Community preservation, twelve.
Oh, I'll do it.
Do you want to do it?
Sure.
amended street acceptance for Kavanaugh Road.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm reaching for something that won't come out. Removing police officers from civil service. Here, if you want to take that first.
I will do that. Actually.
Exactly. Seawell funding. Petitioners article.
I'll do that one.
I could do it.
I'll do the leash law. That helps.
All right, Susan will do the leash law. Okay. All right. Lauren, do you need me to go through it again?
No.
You got it all. Okay. Okay. Right, thanks, guys.
I'm just making sure each of you have something that's not on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I think we do. So, we've got.
And I think you do.
You do, yeah.
Yeah.
Karen Connelly, yeah.
Yeah.
Here in the stock.
Just so you all get to say something.
Yes.
In session views.
Keeping us honest, Lauren.
All right, so we are coming to time where we go through one day license approvals. So, they have a couple here. One day wine and malt license for superior service for a private event for the Maritime Center. There's also one for an event at the river shed. Oh, that's the songwriter festival that got moved. And there's another one for the primary wine catering for another private event, the Maritime Center. And then another one for the black apron at the Maritime Center. Does anyone want to read the motions?
Here, for example, move to approve a one day wine and malt license to Superior Services for a private event at the Citro Maritime Center on October twenty first, twenty twenty three, from eleven thirty AM to two thirty PM. Further move to approve a one day wine and malt license to River Shed for a public event, songwriter festival at fifty two Cotion Side Drive on October twenty first, twenty twenty three, from six PM to ten PM. Further move to approve a one day wine and malt license to primary wine catering for a private event at the Citro Maritime Center on October eighth, two thousand twenty three, from eleven AM to two PM. And finally, move to approve a one day wine and malt license to the Black Apron for a private event at the Citro Maritime Center on September thirty, two thousand twenty three, from six to ten PM.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Connelly, seconded by Mrs. Harrison. Roll call vote.
Ms. Khan.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Ms. Connelly.
Yes. All right, motion passes, so all of those are approved. Do I, I'll make a motion to appoint Nick Demasio to the Bible Review Committee for a term of three years until the successor is named. And I will second by Mrs. Canfield. And I'll also move to reappoint Michelle Wood to the Citro Harbor Cultural District for a term of two years until the successor is named. Second, seconded by Mrs. Connelly. Roll call vote for those two motions.
Do you have Stephen Litchfield for Citro Harbor Cultural District?
I don't have a motion, but I did under.
Yeah, he should be on that.
That we got that as well.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, and I meant to also reappoint Stephen Litchfield to the Citro Harbor Cultural District for a term of two years until the successor is named. Second, seconded by Karen Connelly.
Okay. Ms. Khan.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Ms. Connelly.
Yes. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have some correspondence. Our, our.
Just one?
Just one, okay.
A town Citro Commission on Disabilities is supposed to be its fourth accessibility awareness event on Saturday, March nine from ten AM to one, the event that we held at the Citro High School Gym. And we invite the organizations to participate and take an opportunity to share specific services or programs offered to those who have disabilities and or challenges.
It's a nice event.
Nice event. We'll probably have to remind folks again, because it's.
Yeah, we definitely.
It's not until March.
I put it on the calendar for future.
So, reminds them.
Yeah.
Everybody as we get closer.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, and then we also have to approve our executive session minutes from September twelfth, as well as our regular minutes for a select board meeting. Do I have a motion? On page sixty nine.
Move to accept the minutes for the select board meeting held on September twelfth, twenty twenty three, and move to accept and release executive session minutes for September twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Moved by Mrs. Canfield, seconded by Mrs. Connelly. All those in favor? I have a little call.
Um, Ms. Khan.
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Hi.
And Ms. Connelly.
Yes. Great. All right, so we are, any liaison reports from folks? Andrew?
I have one. There'll be more announcements coming, but Recreation Department is gonna be taking over the world. With a, the French, uh, Olympics, so Souciangri, they're gonna have a sister city games for twenty twenty four. It's gonna happen in, uh, next May. We'd want folks to start. Souciangri, I don't know about the.
Yeah. Yeah, we for it, didn't we?
All these fabulous events. There's gonna be an opening ceremony and. So more to come. They wanted to start.
So they recruiting the global.
Yes.
It's being held in Paris, right?
Well, the Olympics will be, and then they're doing.
Are we going to Souciangri for it?
Yes, yeah.
We are. Are we going? Just asking. If you don't have a set time, you can watch. Yeah, yeah, we have the question.
It's fun. That's just really fun, good news.
Uh, Susan, anything? No. Karen Canfield, any liaison updates?
It's not technically liaison, but I did wanna bring to the board's attention, the Cituit Facts newsletter came out today. And they're home, they're having their, and their first, uh, the season coalition meeting via Zoom on Monday, March, I'm sorry, Monday, October second. At six thirty, but the headline of the newsletter is that Cituit has achieved the lowest ever rates of substance use in several categories. In twenty twenty three. So the work that, uh, they've been doing is definitely making a difference in the community, so. I wanted to.
That's true, yes.
Right.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing that. It's excellent. Karen, any update?
No, liaison, they were here, they're right here.
Yeah.
Um, the only meeting that I've had since we last met was, uh, for Boeheim Trust. We have a tap for humanity come in. And talk to us again, so, um, I'm gonna take a look and see if there are any problems out there that we can partner with them, so. Jimmy, I see and see if there's anything to take a look at. Um, and that's, I think it, we got the update from the Halloway School Building Project today, so, um, we'll set. Um, that next meeting is tomorrow. So, anything else? No, with that, I will take a moment to, um, to adjourn and sign documents. Move by Mr. Goodrich, roll call vote?
Seconded by?
Seconded by Ms. Conley.
Okay. Um, Ms. Karen?[1785.31]